I tell you, it's Barbara Henley's birthday and everyone's out of control.
Yes, happy birthday.
Barbara, we wish you a very happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
And the key thing for her birthday is that we get out of this meeting earlier, correct?
Right.
That's right. So I think we're going to be in good shape with that. But we will go ahead and get started. And the first thing is our city council's briefing by a great friend of ours who served with us for a number of years, Ron Villanueva, delegate in the 21st District, the Virginia General Assembly. But it was a whole lot more important serving on the city council than what it was on.
I always miss you guys.
Ron, we're so glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Barbara, just to let you know, I didn't forget about your birthday. I actually brought cupcakes in the back for you.
Oh, bless your heart.
He's got to outdo us all, okay.
Well, Mayor, greetings and council greetings and salutation. I'm Ron Villanueva. I represent much of Virginia Beach and parts of Chesapeake. As you know, it's served with many of you and it's an honor for me to be here before you today. Reason why I'm here today is we've got this thing called coastal flooding. And we've got a couple of solutions out there. And as you know, this has been discussion for the past two administrations. Governor Cannon initiated coastal flooding and climate change commissions. Governor McAuliffe currently has one, has recently met yesterday. And again, they do have solutions, but the bottom line is, there is no funding solutions for some of your mitigation and adaptation efforts. And we know at the local level, and one of the reasons why I got involved in this is because not only does it flood on the coast, but it floods in our inner districts. And if you recall, many years ago, when we served together on council, there was flooding in the neighborhood on intersection of Lynnhaven Parkway and Indian River Road. And when we did the thorough investigation on trying to find a solution, we found out, number one, that water goes out to the ocean and a lot of the recurrent flooding happens because of coastal flooding. Here is a picture of one of your neighborhoods in Virginia Beach, Mayor and Council. You do know that there are individual efforts in neighborhoods to help mitigate coastal flooding. And we have seen the federal government partly assist in these efforts. To date, they've appropriated $725,000 worth of adaptation needs. We know at that rate, you know, we've got a long ways to go. I didn't put a special blip on there, and you could probably confirm this with your other deputy city manager, Ms. Forrester. Colonel Hanson has some of your CIP projects that are in the budget with regards to flooding. And we have seen some of your CIP projects that are unappropriated, and it's safe to say that it's near a billion dollars. We know in the city of Norfolk, it's about $2 billion. So, one of the -- John, how you doing?
Delegate.
One of the things that's going on right now, and basically I'm here to help give you some education and some information and hopefully partner with you in the next steps, is that in the North Atlantic region, the states have banded together for what we call the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. And this was the product of, it was a Republican idea, believe it or not. Ronald Reagan used some of this free market-based ideas to phase out lead gasoline. H.W. Bush used it for acid rain. Governor Pataki used it for carbon dioxide and W used it to limit sulfur and dioxide emissions from power plants. And this is all free market. It partnered with the industry to help regulate themselves, but came up with an innovative approach on how to fund this stuff. To the right, you can see how the REGI works. Basically, you buy carbon allowances. The companies decide how to innovate with regards to the cap. And it produces annual revenue. And we know in rough estimates that it could potentially provide $200 million worth of revenue to Virginia for coastal flooding needs and other needs. I'm pretty sure you guys are going to get a briefing on the EPA's Clean Power Plan. That's out. We know that utilities are looking at it, investigating how to meet those standards. We know in the General Assembly, there's some, it's a mixed bag. You have some folks that are supporting it, some that don't. But bottom line is, sooner or later, we will have to conform in some form or fashion. So, the Virginia Coastal Protection Act and what we're calling the Commonwealth Resilience Fund was sponsored by myself and Senator McKeachin. And what we tried to do is think out of the box. You know, I sit on Commerce and Labor. I sit on the Energy Subcommittee, and I sit on the Clean Power Plan Subcommittee. And what we found through those discussions is a lot of hesitance to accept something like this, but more importantly, we're at a standstill. And we think the localities can make the argument better for us as well. So, what the Resilience Fund does is it allocates and it goes different areas. 50% of the funds go to adaptation coastal flooding. It goes to energy efficiency. It goes, it helps low and moderate income families with their energy bills. It helps spur our renewable energy industry. I know Mayor and Council are leaders in that with regards to some of these newer alternative energy sources. And in addition, you see the Southwest Recovery Fund. A lot of the resistance to something like this comes from the western part of state where there's a lot of coal plants still and coal communities, and we're having to help them diversify their economy. So, here are a couple of questions. You know, I try not to get too much into the weeds. We've got definitions of the Clean Power Plan and the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. Where are we now? And how do we meet those standards? Oftentimes, you know, at the state and federal level, we tend to be reactive. And this is a proactive measure with regards to meeting the EPA Clean Power Plan standards. So here's how it works. Again, Shid Virginia and some of its other colleagues in the Mid-Atlantic area form a new REGI alliance. You'll see that it does create jobs, it does reduce bills, and it provides certainty with regards to how to plan for the future in attacking pollution, attacking coastal flooding, in addition to helping to spur new industries like solar and wind. So, here's some of the common objections you'll hear from the REGI. It'll increase rates, it'll increase bills, and it'll kill jobs. You know, Richmond's not like Washington, but sometimes it feels like it. And that's some of the rhetoric that you'll hear. But to the right are some of the facts, point and simple. It does decrease electric utility rates. It does create jobs. In addition, if you are familiar with how our power grid works here in Virginia, PJM, which is the main grid operator, has indicated that this multi-state, regional cooperative, compact approach like this will help reduce costs. And that's them seeing that. So, we've got some statewide support. Number of the major newspapers have written about it, including our local. We have city councils passing it. City of Norfolk was kind to step up. City of Charlottesville. And that's why I'm here before you as your colleague, because we know when you need solutions, really it's the local government that's going to be impacted the most. Your citizens are going to ask you for funds on how to fix things, and then you guys are going to come up to the state and the federal guys and go, "Hey, where's the money?" So, we've got to figure it out. And this is before you. If I do return in January, I will sponsor this bill again, Mayor and Council. And we've gotten some good feedback from it. What we've seen is, while the act did not pass, what did pass was a resolution combat coastal flooding. And you and I agree, we've got to find solutions, but what we don't want to do is just shuffle paper. We've got to figure out some concrete solutions. So here's a nice little image, just to visualize, because it's a complex plan. It hits so many areas that are needed. But bottom line is, it creates jobs. It helps with regards to pollution and coastal flooding. And more importantly, it helps neighborhoods and citizens with regards to coastal flooding. I do have today with me some of my partners in this. I have Dewan Robinson from the Chesapeake Climate Action Network. And I'm not sure if someone from the Lynnhaven River Now is here, but hey, how you doing? To help answer any questions that you might have, Mayor and Council.
Very good. Ron, we thank you for taking the time. Questions or comments, please? You did such a good job, as usual. Oh, John.
I just want to applaud them. I like auction theory and free market approaches to solving problems. And whether the goal is the right goal or not is immaterial. What's important is, it's not a big regulatory overhead to achieve the result. And so that's what's really positive. And people put a price on what they think it's worth. And it does work well. It's been well, it's used well in Europe for a lot of things, auction theory, very good. And so, I applaud you for that.
Thank you, John. And that's a free market approach. It doesn't, you know, put the overregulation on you. It asks the industry to actually come up with this idea, but government has to come up with the regulatory framework for this. And we can't do it without the local participation.
Thank you very much, my friend.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me today. Barbara, happy birthday.
Okay. Well, now getting to the city manager's briefing. There, Mr. Forrester.
Okay. This afternoon, what we wanted to do, and this is for information only today, we're not asking for any action, but we're talking about two items that have come up in just the last couple of days, and still working on one as recently as this morning. But those ideas are related to the NEPA process itself as it relates to light rail and the potential advanced acquisition of rail cars that could save us some funds that would help, obviously, in terms of accomplishing the project. The, I kind of get to the, maybe the bottom line here, and Dave has got a lot more detail and we can go into discussion in a minute, but essentially, when the LPA was made, when the locally preferred alternative decision was made by council, the FDA started thinking about the project as it was then configured, that being three miles of track on an existing Norfolk Southern right-of-way ending at Town Center. And so they began to think through what would their response to that be. Many of the more complex environmental issues have been avoided by stopping at Town Center in terms of the potential, if you recall, the Hilltop Loop and all of those issues involving property acquisition and so on. Those fall by the wayside. So the project is greatly simplified in terms of its scope and extent, and certainly environmental impact. Second issue really had to do with the state's decision as they restructured their six-year funding plan. And as they decided to fund this project out of state funds rather than federal funds, the FDA informed us that they really don't, the FDA really does not have a further role in completing NEPA for this project. So they have indicated to us verbally that they plan to send HRT a letter to that effect indicating that as far as the FDA is concerned, and that's who makes this decision. The NEPA process is completed and we've gone through that. Means you don't have to wait for a record of decision and some other factors as well that impact the cost of the project. Dave is going to go into those in a minute, but that's the bottom line on NEPA. We're through with the process, according to the federal partner. Now, we don't have that in writing from them yet. We do have it verbally. We have it in an email, but we would have to get that in a final letter of termination from them. That is their unilateral decision that they make. On the rail car issue, we were told by HRT that they have in fact contacted Minneapolis. Minneapolis does have an option to purchase additional cars that are very similar, compatible with our vehicles, and that they would make those cars available to us at the contract price as that they can negotiate, and it would be a savings involved in that. That option period for the Minneapolis Transit System runs out, we have been told, on the 29th of September. So if we did want HRT or the DRPT to take advantage of that, we'd have to take action on the budget resolution that you all included when you adopted the budget on September 15th. So, that's kind of the bottom line on those two issues. Dave has got some additional information for you on, particularly focusing on, what does this mean, assuming we get this letter from the FDA? What are the potential savings that could accrue to the project from FDA's decision?
Dave, glad to have you.
Well, I think your manager's got full command and gave you the bottom line up front. My job is to give you some, a packet to consider over the next two weeks before we come back and provide the city council the opportunity to either pass an ordinance or a resolution in accordance with your FY '16 budget ordinance. The first four charts really talk about more in depth, what Jim talked about, the fact that the federal government requires compliance with NEPA if a federal action or federal funding are used for a major transit project, as the second line of the second bullet says. This, if it's anticipated at the beginning of your study or your project development, you believe that you'll use federal dollars, then you need to engage in this process. We did that because, as you remember, the original alternatives were to Rosemont and then to alternatives to the beach. And we know those dollars amounts would have required federal involvement. When we actually looked at where the potential for us to compete along with the other $53 billion in federal funding requirements for light rail, we felt like we would be somewhere in that 20- to 25-year waiting period to get federal dollars. And so partnerships were struck between the city and the state to figure out ways that we could potentially move this forward to extend light rail into Virginia Beach. I think the third bullet basically states that if no federal dollars are included, then there's no other federal, and no other federal action required like vacation. Vacation of, I asked Dana about what that might be, like vacation of a railroad right-of-way, a federal railroad right-of-way, then no further federal action is required. And then the last bullet addresses the reason why we went forward with the NEPA process. Well, that, the change started to occur at the time that the city council made their LPA decision to fund a rather limited, minimal operational segment, that is, the extension into Virginia Beach, 3.1 miles to our Town Center. And so, having looked at the, with the LPA decision in there and FDA already having the DEIS in their hand and not really recognizing any significant environmental impacts because you're building a light rail line on a former freight line of the Norfolk Southern, they would automatically, as part of the NEPA process, start to downgrade from an environmental impact study to an environmental assessment, and then potentially to a exclusion, a categorical exclusion. That would be the lowest level that the NEPA process would go. At that point, if no federal dollars are involved, they would terminate, as Jim said, that process. I think that because we made that decision and because we are going to use a 50-50, or we're going to appropriate 50% from the state and 50% from the local, in about the June timeframe, the federal government and HRT started to have some discussions. And I'll provide you some source documents in the attachments that are in this. They will issue what is going to be, we expect to receive a letter that will say that we are going to determine that this project and give you a class of action determination that this is a categorical exclusion. It doesn't become our true document until such time as we would apply for federal funding. And so what will happen is, once they make that final, once they determine that class of action, they'll also say, we expect to see in the FDA letter from Region 3, which has to go through their headquarters in Washington, that they'll terminate a requirement for NEPA to continue. They won't have any jurisdiction at the state and the local level to continue with this process. And even if they did, they'd do it at the lowest level of a categorical exclusion. They would, at the request of us, to have federal dollars. They'd formalize that document, and then we would go into the competition for federal dollars, which we probably wouldn't compete very well with. So, the last bullet on this is probably a question that some of you may be thinking at this point. What does that do for our permitting and our environmental compliance at the state level with DEQ and with our own regulations for construction? We'll still have to be compliant with that. We'll still do any wetlands delineation. We'll still get permits that are necessary for construction and any environmental permits that may or may not be required, associated with the parking rides or the kiss-and-rides or the parking garages or all the things that are associated with it. As Jim said, we will probably receive that letter in due course. And then we have been told by HRT that they will probably, they will put out a communique of how they will respond to the public comments substantive, involved with substantive environmental impact concerns of the public during the DEIS. And they'll close that action out by responding to those things. I think that the use of dollars to date are all, and we've discussed this at length, both with the federal, the state, and HRT, the dollars used to date for the EIS process have all been bona fide. You need to go through the process up until you determine what your locally preferred alternative is, and that we will be allowed to continue to use those federal funds for the 30% design that is necessary for completing the engineering portion before you move into an actual competitive procurement process. The last two bullets are very important to us, and we had to clarify that over the last week and get that ironed out. And that is, by concluding the NEPA process, we wanted to make sure that we are not jeopardizing our ability to receive from the federal government, HRT to receive from the federal government, operational and maintenance support, because right now, we're counting on about 65% funding coming from that, from the federal side of the House, to operate the system and maintain the system going forward. And the same is true that concluding the NEPA process won't jeopardize our ability to pursue our long-term strategy of creating the south-side transit system, of continuing on to the beach, of going north on the red line to Little Creek in the airport, and south down here on the green line to municipal center. This next document, this next chart, and you will find in your packets four attachments. And we're sharing with you some initial information that was exchanged between the Federal Transit Authority Administration and the HRT Authority, starting to have that discussion about the use of dollars and the use of no federal dollars. And that occurred in the late part of June. And then through July, there was some discussion, and early August, some discussion about what these interpretations and understanding what the lawyers were telling the administrator. And then finally, in August, we just forced with some very blunt questions through HRT, "Please answer this question," and the response is designated in Appendix D from the Regional 3 Administrator, to say that "FTA will not act as a lead federal agency for a proposed action if the project sponsor intends to fund a project entirely with state and city funds." So, I'll click at this time, before I move to the light rail cars, and ask the city council if you have any questions on the NEPA process and the fact that we're going to receive a termination of that action required by the FDA.
Thank you very much, Dave. Questions or comments?
I have one. Is there a reason why we couldn't have received this brief in our package on Friday so we could have looked at it in advance? I'm sure this wasn't done over the weekend. Is there a reason why?
Councilman, believe it or not, I normally have all your briefing charts well at your table. I can tell you that the lawyers and I were back there at 3:15 finishing up these things.
John, I want to back it up. We talked about trying to get it out Friday at the meeting. And I gendered it maybe.
Was there a reason these letters couldn't have been provided in advance? They certainly were dated in June, so they certainly were available. Is there a reason they weren't provided in advance?
I'm referring to the press station. I didn't know what the attachment was going to be.
We didn't get the clarifications, as you can see in the attachment, it's councilman, until about the 28th of August. And we were in on the phone as late as yesterday discussing this with the federal.
I'm just saying, definitely was Dave to try to do it. I'll ask you to take our word. Let's move on. Any other questions?
I don't take your word for it, but let's move on.
Okay. As Jim said, the second item is light rail vehicle purchase. As Jim said, Minneapolis Metro Rail, they placed and got a contract for 44 light rail Siemens vehicles, very similar to what we're using on the tie. They're not going to use 44 vehicles. So, HRT and DRPT are working feverishly to piggyback on that option. You can see that instead of our projected estimate of 5.1 million per copy, it'll be reduced to 4.3 million per copy. And so that's a savings of about 3.2. As somebody said in the hallway, it's kind of like a Macy's sale. You got to get in and you got to buy it before September 29th. But if you'll recall, during the FY '16 budget discussions, we kind of told you, we'd be back in the September timeframe to have this discussion about light rail vehicles. I didn't really think it'd be the first of September that I'd be standing up here, but I think being prompt and timely is an important thing. So here we are, bringing to your attention the opportunity to take advantage of these savings. And so, because of your ordinance, the last bullet states that we will be coming back to you for your approval. And your very last chart before council discussion in the packet references that verbiage that's in your budget ordinance. Now, there's some other benefits that will occur as a result of not using federal dollars, and that is an ability to not be required to comply with the Buy America Act, specifically with regards to steel. So, I said to my team, "Let's take a look at, let's take a look at a known variable, and that is, how many linear feet of rail track are we really going to be acquiring? And give me a determination of what the Buy America is costing folks that are using that versus folks that would not have to use it." And right now, the cost of US steel is about $373 per linear foot. And if you're able to buy Canadian or outside steel, you'll have a 25% savings, taking you down to about $280 a square foot. In other words, a $93, not square foot, a linear foot savings. There's about 34,000 linear feet of track that will be placed on the 3.1 miles, and that's a savings of about $3.2 million. When you apply that structural steel to our two above-grade crossings and the structural steel associated with parking garages. steel associated with parking garages, you're probably doubling that savings. So we're projecting, with a reasonable estimate at this time, this alone and the steel, we don't think you'll see much out of concrete, because China's already slowed down their acquisition of cement powder, and the costs here in town have already dropped for concrete because of the slowdown in China. We think it's reasonable to assume that we'll have a savings of about 6.4 on this. Another federal requirement, if you use federal dollars, is the Davis-Bacon Act, and I have very, have a lot of familiarity with this on my core projects, and I think that it's reasonable to assume that over 20%, we're using 22% savings in labor costs will be realized by not being compliant with Davis-Bacon. We took a look at the labor records in the first segment of the tide, and we're feeling that we're going to save a full $13 million, and then the entire administration costs of being compliant with the federal and all the audits that go on about that and the payroll validations is another million one. So we're projecting another $14.1 million savings. So all told, today's discussion has had an impact on the potential delivery of this project for less than what we started the summer at, and our projected savings from the discussion today is somewhere in that 23 to 24 million, and we feel that's a reasonable estimate that will be achieved. I wanted to present to you on your handouts, the latest schedule. I haven't had an opportunity to be with you on this subject for several months, and we've got you an update here and added the council discussion today and the impending council consideration on the 15th. And you'll see that we've struck the record of decision, which was a critical activity that would have been received from FTA, granted down to the HRT, who would be completing that study since this one will go forward. We think that we're very fortunate to have the engineering team that HRT currently has. If you ask me what I think, how they're doing, I think they're ahead of schedule already in their design efforts. We've had several very productive meetings between our project delivery team and their engineering design team, and we're very, very pleased with how they're moving forward. All that is dependent upon the geotechnical and the utility analysis that we're currently engaged in. There's a lot of above-ground transmission lines and distribution Dominion lines, and a lot of below-water and sanitary sewer lines that need to be dealt with and are in that right-of-way, and getting a good grasp on that with about a 60% design will go a long way to seeing a successful completion of this project. We also wanted to share with you our, a cost, an execution matrix, if you will, on the state and local cost share funding schedule. We just have completed working this out. We got this copy on Monday from DRPT. They've agreed to begin with their $155 million to begin a cost share for the first fiscal year of 80/20, and we'll flip that over the series, over the four years that will deliver the project. And you can see the breakdown of the funding split. That will essentially provide that the state's dollars are first out the door in the reimbursement process for the construction of the project. This is your last chart before discussion, and that is just to make sure that you understand that we understand, the staff, that we are required to come back to the City Council via ordinance or resolution for approval of that bus, of that light rail vehicle purchase. So subject to your questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. We've got some questions all lined up here. John Earn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Hey, Dave Allen, this might be an HRT question, but I've got just a few questions about the savings that you all have come up with.
Sure.
The project, the cost for the vehicle coming in at the 4.3 million.
Yes, sir.
What additional changes are to the cars in the Minneapolis contract to make it compliant with this system?
The only difference that we've been told at this point is their cars are about three feet longer than the current tied cars. They've been heads down for the last week, evaluating the radius of curves that they have in Norfolk and whether or not that front end moves out into traffic, but they're feeling very confident that that is not a, that is not a material difference and that it'll still ride on their rails. I think the reduction in the cost is just a quantity and a negotiated price that Minneapolis did at the back end of the recession, and Siemens was looking for, to lock down work. So I think it's a great opportunity.
And then, thank you for that. And then for the estimated savings for the steel, you had indicated that half of that, the 3.2 million, is applying to the other structural areas other than the track itself, including the parking garages.
Yes, sir.
Two questions there. Is the, were the parking garages, would they have been required, if we'd gone through with the federal issue, would they have been required to be component of that Buy America part as well?
Yes, sir.
Even if...
If there were federal dollars involved in the funding of this project, any associated work item within the contract would have been compliant, had to be compliant with Buy America.
Okay. And then my last question, Mr. Merrick, if you don't mind, is the, for the current estimate for the light rail extension to three miles, are all the parking garages in that estimate as well?
Yes, sir.
Which...
We're going to put a parking, we're going to put a parking garage at the HRC on the site where we're building the Human Resource Center. We've cited that, and we're moving forward with the geotech of where that is. It'll be right there off of Southern Boulevard, where the HRC is, next to Witch Duck, and that's where the Witch Duck at Grade Station will be. And the second one has to be at our town center. We could create a surface lot in there, but that's certainly not the best use of property inside the town center. So, and we know that the third station, the middle one, Kellum's, going to be a walk-on with just a kiss-and-ride, meaning drive up and jump out of the car and jump onto the train.
Bobby D.
Thank you. Nobody respects senior management more than I do, and Colonel Hanson. And, you know, when we have this, this is probably, once again, one of the most major decisions we're going to make in this city, right up there with Lake Gaston and every other thing. And, you know, like with major decisions, they got positives and negatives. And, you know, I guess, once again, I assume my role as the loyal opposition, and, you know, just try to bring, you know, a conversation here that is something to really think about. And, you know, despite a lot of the hype and hyperbole, I really think at this point, the decision on light rail, you know, is still out. It's not been made. The jury is still out. And I think there's a lot of steps that we have to take, you know, before we go ahead and proactively go into the decision-making process. And, you know, basically, all what's missing elements here are, first of all, a major overall comprehensive plan for not only Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads about where this would fit within the whole picture in creating an effective transportation network. Once again, you know, opening up that, you know, we really need to consider high-speed rail coming down here. Once again, I reiterate that the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel is one of the major impediments to economic development, I think, could hamper any type of economic development that we have going forward. The fact that we don't have a destination airport, the fact that we're a congested cul-de-sac right now, are just barriers that we have to take into consideration going forward. So I think it would be great to, you know, put this in a context of what a major plan would be. And I guess what I'm going to also say is also that, you know, we have to bring the public to the table to find out what their needs and wants are, and I think we, as a council, have we really had that substantial conversation yet on the merits of what light rail would mean to the city in terms of impact. One of the things that we have yet to really achieve yet at this point is this initiative practical, feasible, and affordable. And until we get that, a handle on that, I'm kind of reluctant to go forward with proactive steps that would enable the process going forward. And I think we also have to be really cognizant that a lot of the tangible financial benefits of light rail may be decades away. You know, that we're, there's going to be a cost to pay, you know, that we may or may not be able to afford. And, you know, the thing is, I guess my other main concern, and believe me, I'm not disparaging on our friends in Norfolk or anything, but, you know, the light rail that we're considering is in many ways, you know, considering the technologies of the future, Betamax technology. I think it's dated and in many ways obsolete, and it's expensive to run, and how might it tie into any other future systems, you know, going forward? And, you know, my own personal thing is that what I want to avoid, especially with the public, is the perception of incremental, you know, manipulation. In other words, are we going to, like in a slow drip, buy this, buy that and everything so when decision time comes, you know, we say, well, listen, we already invested all this money and everything. We have no other choice but to go forward. So the point is, though, and, you know, Dave, I, you know, trust me, you're doing your job and trying to come up here and, you know, save us money and everything, but the thing is, saving on money is, this is something eventually, are we really going to want to buy? Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Rosemary?
I have a couple of questions, and then I'd like to say something. So the, hold harmless on the cars from the Department of Transportation, do we have that in writing?
We will, and we've had several vocal conversations with the Secretary of Transportation. In truth, in reporting and all information on the table, there's a consideration of the right-of-way associated with this project. So they're going to buy these, as we said on the second to last bullet here, that they'll hold the city harmless, and they'll convey all those over to the existing light rail system. But if you make a decision that you're not going to follow through on a light rail project, there'll be the question of reimbursement for right-of-way acquisition, which is concerned by the state.
So I think it's going to be really important, at least to me and probably the rest of you, that we have that in writing from the state that we don't...
Yes, ma'am.
...be held harmless.
Yes, ma'am.
And the $155 million from the state, that's up to $155 million, no matter what the project costs. Is that clear?
Yes, ma'am.
So the state is putting in $155 million and a $30 million very low interest loan.
That's changed a little bit. Arlington submitted an application and consumed the entire reserve fund in that low-interest transportation loan pot. However, there will be somewhere between 70 to 90 million that is going to become available back into the pot once the 460 gets closed out, because they've got, I think, almost 90 million in that pot. That'll replenish those. Brian is working diligently to prepare our application. We are in receipt of Arlington, or I think it's Arlington.
Alexandria.
Alexandria's application. We're looking at it, the template that they received there, a fairly hefty loan from that. But yes, ma'am, we are going to pursue that. Patty's looked at it. It's lower interest than we can get, and we'll help offset our debt utilizing that instrument.
So there's a difference between we're going to pursue this or that money is going to be there when we need it?
Well, when 460's money opens up, it'll be in that pot. Our application will be going in. We think we'll compete very favorably for that money. We're a fairly good bet for repayment, and so we think we're, we have great promise in winning that grant. It's not a grant, winning that low-interest loan, excuse me.
But I think the key point is just where you're driving, is that before you have to make a decision on the rail cars to authorize them to go ahead and buy them, you'll have it in writing. And before, according to the schedule right now, June of '17 is when you make the final decision on light rail. You'll know whether that loan fund's been replenished.
So I don't know that it's been really clear with the, I don't think a lot of the council's thoughts have been very clear to the public of what we think about light rail. And, I mean, actually, we haven't made, it's not a done deal. We're still waiting for information. And when we look at what the actual referendum question said was that we would pursue all reasonable efforts. Well, I think everything hinges on that word, reasonable. And the truth of the matter is, we don't know what that is yet. We're not going to know what that amount is until this goes out to bid and the bids come in. I mean, HRT's number that they put out initially was enormous with 45% contingency or huge contingency amount. And then we've been led to believe that we're going to get bids much, much lower than that. So until we actually know what they are, we don't know what reasonable is. So I think it's really important for the public to know, this is not a done deal. We have listened to them. We are pursuing all reasonable efforts. But until we find out what that amount is, we'll have to decide whether it's reasonable or not. And if we stay putting up $155 million and then these other numbers coming down, and that $327 million was such an enormous number that most people are saying that, that know what this thing is actually going to cost, say it's going to be a whole lot less, once we can get all of that information, then we can make a decision whether it's reasonable or not. So I think that's really important, that we move forward, we're held harmless on the rail cars. If we don't go forward, we're going to have to pay the $20 million back to the state. So we've got to take all of that information, and once we have it, decide whether we can make a reasonable effort.
Good comments. John Moss.
A couple. Well, I just want to confirm that for the people that live in Kentville, there's no above-grade crossing at Princess Sand Road as it approaches Newtown Road. That will be an at-grade crossing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody knew that.
Since we don't have any federal funding and we don't have all this oversight, which I think is great, are we revisiting the con ops for how we want, the concept of operations for how we want to run the bus system? Because we equalize, we'll be using state and local money for the buses, which means we don't have to buy into the labor contracts of the bus system. And do we want to have that additional bus service, much like they have in Fairfax County, Arlington Fairfax Express? They've gone to those because the metro's so expensive. Are we also going to be examining how we do our feeder bus system, and why the fact that this is, we're using local funds to make that happen and really maximize the advantages of not being under some of those...
Is that doable, Dave? That's a great point.
Do it in Fairfax County, I know.
We have a transit authority. It's designed to train, equip, maintain, administer bus drivers, bus maintenance, bus procurement, bus scheduling, for us to independently take over O and M operations and maintenance of a whole transit system on our side.
I get that. All right, I get that.
I'm not going that way. I'm talking about, they've done this privatization, and they've gone out and bought service. They're not running that Fairfax Transit. They're not running that Arlington Shuttle Service. They've gone out and acquired a service, and someone's been there paying the cost of the service.
Incremental increase? Buses, are you talking about?
They have new, all our feeder bus systems to feed the thing we're talking about don't have to be, don't have to be HRT buses to do the feeder bus system. I'm not saying replace 20, but if we're talking about the additional feeder bus services to feed these hubs.
That's true.
Over and above that level, a different frequency of services, we don't have to use a higher cost of HRT to provide that. And other localities have... And other localities have done that. I, it's up in Northern Virginia, you see it a lot of places, they haven't gone to Metro to provide that incremental level of service.
We need to look at that.
It's too expensive. That was one of the ones. I understand this not buying America, but I'm not so certain if we're using all Virginia money, we might not want to think about buy Virginia, because we're using taxpayers' money, we're telling them, gosh, we can make steel in Virginia, but we're going to put you, we're not going to give you work, we're going to give it somewhere else. That plays two ways, I'm not saying what the right way is, but I think you have to understand the optic of that communication and know what your industrial base in Virginia is, and are we feeding our industrial base with the taxpayers' money here?
Now, we're researching where, where steel is produced and what, what's out there, so we'll share that information when we get done with that analysis.
And getting back to Rosemary, Councilman Wilson's question, I think was a good one. If in fact we choose not to go forward, and therefore they, we paid for the buses, but they're holding us harmless, that would be the credit we could take against what we owe them the $20 million for the right-of-way money, which in fact would be cheap maybe compared to the cost. But I do agree, until we actually get bids in, that we don't know, because in the DEIS itself, it said the estimates could be anywhere from 10% under to 40% over. That's a big range of cost. And hopefully we still won't be in a recession then, so we're getting low prices because nobody's working, that's not a good thing. But, but I do agree with your analysis about cement and the steel, that does make sense. But I still don't know in the end that it still makes good business to do it, no matter how much it does or doesn't cost. And I think that's ultimately what we have to have a discussion with the public about when we have the real numbers, is it still worthwhile, given the opportunity cost? And I keep saying again, I mentioned here, is we have a lot of bills to pay, and I think our exposure to sea level rise and flood and whatnot from hurricanes is much more immediate than the transportation issue that this represents.
Thank you, John Sheen.
Rosemary asked my question.
Okay, Bobby.
Just to kind of be more specific, this is a very good overview of the total project and the timeline, and I like seeing that, and that's, that's very good, appreciate it. And appreciate you all's looking at the, the difference in costs, that these two factors, that is, concluding the NEPA process and the federal funding will ultimately bring some savings. But the, the immediate question we're being asked to do is September 15th, we're being asked if we would purchase these four rail cars at a total cost of 17.2 million.
May I correct that, Barbara?
Okay, I was sort of asking, it's so good, that's what I want to know.
The question is, that's going to be put before us, is whether or not we're going to ask the state to purchase the cars.
Okay, is that correct? Is that the way it's going to be funded? That'll be right, because the state is going to be holding us harmless. Okay, but whether or not we go forward with saying that they should be purchased, that's what we are going to be asked. And so, so I guess the question that we're looking at is if we're willing to buy into that special, Macy's special, or not, to be able to potentially save 3.2 million later. And so that's the question that's before us today.
Correct.
But I think that fits very well with, with what that referendum question said, that we are supposed to take all reasonable effort to, and I think for, for us to say we're not going to pursue saving 3.2 million wouldn't be a reasonable effort, and I think, well, just, if this is what we're being asked, and we're not committing, we're doing the project and so forth, because we are being held harmless. But as far as it fitting that question, I think certainly reasonable effort to bring it in at a reasonable cost.
Very good. Amelia?
Well, I feel, you know, confident about this part of doing the savings for the state from that aspect, especially where you mentioned it being harmless. There's one of the questions I did ask way ahead, asking what happens if we don't do this? Have we just lost money? And that, I was told, even at that point, no, we will be held harmless for that. And I think it's really positive. And the other thing I wanted to ask you to clarify a tiny bit about the estimated project labor savings, can you explain a little bit more about that, I mean, 13 million?
Right. The federal, the federal government establishes specific minimal wage rates for various trades, if you will, welding, heavy equipment operations, excavation, and they are very regimented in ensuring that if they fund a project, that the project delivery team ensures that the contractor, the prime contractor, and the subcontractors are paying those wages. And so those wages are, are built for a national scale as opposed to a regional wage, market-based wage system for those trades. And so the feds are very specific about it, and they're extremely deliberate in their monitoring, and our record-keeping is required. We've done several roads where we've been, had federal dollars involved there and compliant with it. Most, all the VDOT roads that are constructed here under the legacy system have a lot of federal dollars in there, and they're very compliant with it. Where we would like to see roads built in 24 months, the federal government will, VDOT will give them 36 months to 48 months, and it's because of the deliberation that goes on with government contracting and compliance with federal standards.
And I think, Dave, to be fair, it's, it's not just the technical jobs, it's everything from the labor of, that.
The engineers, the superintendents.
That's all Davis Bacon, and that's all extremely expensive.
Elevated, yes, sir.
And, and I'll tell you, probably, and just haven't done this before, the biggest headache in it is the record-keeping, because if you've got employees working on different projects, you're paying them different amounts depending upon where they are, and you have to keep track of all that, because when Uncle Sam comes knocking, you have to have your documents, and they do stop by routinely.
Yeah, that makes sense. I want you to have reasonable answers, because costs, you know, different places.
And we, and we've met with four consortiums that are interested in being a part of this competitive process that we're setting up on the, on the schedule, and I see one of them's actually in the crowd today that we met with yesterday, so.
John?
Are we still looking at a fixed price versus design-to-build as a contractual strategy?
It's going to be a design build, Councilman, the FEMA, or not the FEMA, the HRT design will take it up to 30%, will do 60% on the utilities and the operating system, which are the two points that we need to have a lot of specificity in. Don't really need to design a parking garage, most good firms can probably pull out five graphs and have it designed in a weekend. But as we, as we really try to put the, a limit on our scoping for the project, I think a design build will really allow them to utilize their expertise, and all the consortiums that we've met with are busy building in Charlotte, they're building in, they're building in Metro, up in DC, they have large, large repertoire of projects in their resume, they're pretty good at what they do.
Even while I ask that, when we had the original proposal, as we started out, several people came in with fixed prices to build this. This is not high-tech, this isn't building space shuttle.
Yes, sir.
Parking garages. I'd like to have more discussion later in time about what, because design-to-build is more expensive, that is a known fact, that's not a guess, that's true. Which shows, I'd just like to understand why, given the nonsophistication of this, and they are all over the country, why we can't have a fixed-price strategy and why that's risky? I need, I'd like to better understand that.
I look forward to that conversation. Any other questions, comments, John?
I did have a kind of follow-up question to that, is that, so at the end of this, David, we're not, we're not going to look at a not-to-exceed contract price from the bids?
Oh, yes, sir, we will.
Okay. So that's.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, well, and that's, that was really the essence of my comments, and this is really the first time that, you know, I've seen this outline of, of the grid, and certainly the public hasn't seen it yet, about the sequencing of it. But, you know, the nice thing, being in our position, is that, you know, when we ultimately do have to make a decision to start spending sizable amounts of money, we will know with certainty what the actual costs are, and we won't be sitting here talking about whether it's, you know, a higher price or a low price or whatever, we will have a price that we will look at. And I also think it's important that the public recognize that, you know, we've been able to create a process where we have not expended a lot of local dollars to get to that point. I mean, our, the sum total of our investment, when we get to a point to make that ultimate decision, is going to be our portion of, of the right-of-way, which I believe, if I remember correctly, was it 5 million or?
20.
The city part.
20 million.
It was 20.
20 million.
And then we've got our amount for the actual design build, the bridging documents, so we can actually put that out. And, oh, that's right, that was the HRT part. And then, and then the amount that we're putting in there for the, the bike path that we're going to put on there. But I mean, that's the, that's the sum in essence of what our investment will be at light rail up until the point in time that we decide whether we're going to go forward or not. And, and that's, that's kind of a good position to be in, in my view.
I agree. Rosemary?
And then that we've talked about, in the uptown center, and that could possibly become a grand central station for other spurs and going forward from that point, I am concerned that in doing this, that maybe we can plan for land that we might need for that, but I don't think we should build a station, to overbuild a station for that until, you know, we know going forward that that would happen. So I think that sometimes people get a little jealous and they start planning, and, but I think we just, we need to keep it for what it needs to be, to be the end stop.
Thank you.
And not overbuild a, a big station right there.
Yes, ma'am, we, we envision at bare minimum a platform comparable to the platforms we're going to build at Calum and Whitstock. It may be, maybe an extra 20 feet on each end longer, since we're going to build the monolith that the, that the train pulls up to, the concrete monolith with all the conduit associated with it. And then, at worst, there could be a surface lot right next to it, and that would be it. That would be, that would be the bare minimum. But we are keeping, there are a lot of people asking us questions about that location and what's envisioned in that Columbus Village complex area, and then south of the rail line, a long Constitution extended, and it's, it's a buzz in town center. You're on the development authority, you know what I'm talking about. So we'll see where that goes.
Bobby, we'll wind this up off.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, Colonel, I really appreciate your presentation, but if, one of the things I think it would be helpful to the public in this council is also, you know, to have the senior management team come up with a list of the, what may be the barriers to success of this. You know, Ron's talking about sea level rise, our friends in Norfolk have, you know, some, you know, flooding problems down there, and this is all, you know, surface traffic and things like that. And also the independence exchange, you know, I think is going to be, you know, a source of the consideration. And then also, maybe also if we have some contingency planning in case things don't live up to expectations over the future. You know, what-if scenarios, you know, what if the ridership's not as projected, what if, you know, it doesn't develop? At least, you know, have some kind of plan where, you know, we're not going to be blindsided.
Shannon?
I do have one.
Okay.
Call me crazy, but really, are they not going to build more rail cars within the next three years? I mean, is this our only time to jump onto this $3 million savings? I just find that hard to fathom, that there's not going to be another order of rail cars somewhere within the next three years.
There probably will be, but what we want to try and do is take advantage of the price that they negotiated like three years ago.
Jim could follow up on that?
Yeah, I can follow up on that, because we, John and I met with folks from DRPT and HRT on Thursday, talking about this specific thing. The issue is, is the rail cars don't just come right out of the, the assembly line, it takes about two years to build them, and they have to tool up in order to do it. And as, as Jim pointed out, he's correct, these, this price was negotiated a while back, and it's like anything else, if they've, if they've got a bid on 44 vehicles and then we come along with four, you can see where the, where the difference is going to be. I mean, it's, it's, it's a good bit cheaper. The, the delta on the difference between what Minneapolis is getting and what we're getting is more than just the graphics package on the side, it's, it's all the software and computers and programming and all that that has to go into, to these things. So, and they also need to run these things for, I forget what they say, like six months? Yeah, before they put them into service. They'd like to burn about 1,000 miles into each rail car, and so if you think about the length of what we have to work with on the tide and even on the extension, that's a lot of back-and-forth trips, but they do that to get the bugs out of them, so they run them for quite some time, so.
So if we ordered these cars today, when would we get them, best-case scenario?
It's 24 months.
Yeah, at least 24 months, yeah.
Okay, so we get these in 24 months, we still don't have a track, what do we do with these cars in that meantime?
Well, they, they would go, there's already existing light rail track in Norfolk, so they'd be running. Yeah, yeah, I don't know if you noticed that. And so they're, they're running back and forth on that and put them into service, because the vehicle storage and maintenance facility is in Norfolk. If we extend it beyond town center, we'd have to build a separate vehicle storage and maintenance facility, but there's enough capacity there to, to test and maintain these.
John and John.
And just to follow up on that, as well as the, within that meeting that we had with them, it, it's not just a function of is somebody else going to build rail cars, but they have to be building the rail cars that are compatible with your system. So it's not, all rail cars aren't compatible with all systems. So it's not just a function of trying to find, hey, somebody put it in there. So in fact, there's many different ones that are being produced in the next several years, and it was just by happenstance that they were able to find one that would be compatible with ours. And even at that, they've got to check and make sure that that three feet's going to work. And in addition to that, really, if you, if you look at the schedule, we ultimately pulled the trigger and do do it, we're really ordering these probably only about six months ahead of what it would take to actually start the revenue service and do all the testing for that. So it's not like it's, you know, it's, it is.
Just in, just in time.
Yeah.
It really is.
It seems like way forward in advance, but it really isn't.
John?
Getting back to Ms. Henley's point, this issue is really is, if we're not having our mind made up about light rail, which we haven't, what we're really saying is, we have no objection to the state buying cars for the city of Norfolk, because in the event, we don't do a track, Norfolk gets the trains. And so really, we're just voting for the state to buy trains for Norfolk, and really for us if we decide to proceed.
Put it just like that.
Well, but that is.
I don't know.
But that is the, if we don't vote to go forward with light rail, the state's bought the trains, Norfolk gets them. That is true.
That is true.
It's only if we decide later to build, which we said we haven't made up our mind, are the trains used in Virginia Beach. So we really are fundamentally at the lowest common denominator of voting to buy Norfolk trains.
And if they don't, and if they build their route to the naval base and all, they'll use it for that.
Well, I want to just say, this has been great comments, I hope everyone feels the same way. I, I do have a few things, and, you know, technically, we probably wouldn't even have to vote on this thing, but we're doing the right thing, bringing it forth publicly, John being as hit in the head, it's the state buying. But we're doing the right thing by bringing it forward to council to, to address as I think our intent is. One major question that we got, that I've gotten a verbal answer on, but we certainly need a written answer on, is the maintenance of these, of everything on that three-mile stretch, that we want to make sure the feds will still operate and maintain that three-mile track, train. And Mark has gotten a verbal okay on that, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we're going to get that in, in black and white, which is.
Guarantee subject to appropriation, I'm sure.
Well, the answer is, the answer is, not completing the NEPA process would not disqualify you.
There, that's what I'm getting at.
For the operation and maintenance funding. That's the question and the answer.
Okay, I agree with that.
But in addition, from our last retreat, something was brought out, I think by Lewis and by Barbara, you know, I do think, Jim, I want to review that development along those three miles, as to the potential, and that shouldn't be tough to get the SGA information out there, and talk about what we anticipate, the property owners that have already shown some interest and so forth. I think that's absolutely critical to show what has occurred development-wise, potential for new development, and what people are ready to develop but waiting to see if, if light rail comes. Something that has been troubling me, and I bet you every time I talk to any of you all or the staff about light rail, is this huge number that's out there, the $320 million. And we've started today with the savings, that I hope these savings will continue. But what I've just received an hour ago, and you all have received this too, is a letter that Arby Lane has sent to HRT, and he is trying to get clarifications on cost as well. If you sit back and look at his letter, and you do have this, but. If you sit back and look at his letter, and you do have this, but we're stating right now at $105 million per mile cost on what's projected. An earlier estimate that HRT gave was $65 million. $43 million was actual cost per mile of Norfolk. And then we had an unsolicited offer to go to Rosemont Road of $45 million. And as we see these num, you know, I feel like I've got my arm, we all feel like we got our arms twisted behind our back because we really can't speculate based on the information that HRT has presented to us. And who am I to question that? But I am questioning it and now it appears the Secretary of Transportation is questioning it. And he's going to try to get them to prove to him, prove where these numbers came from. I think that's absolutely critical. Another thing that we also must remember in the cost of light rail to Virginia Beach, which I think is what everyone, whether you want light rail or not, wants. You want that bike path and walking path along that line. And that's going to make it a heck of a lot better for all the citizens to enjoy and benefit from. And there will be a cost. And another thing, which I think everyone at this table wants, is the large number of buses that are going to be ordered in order to improve the bus service, especially getting people in and out to light rail to make it more successful. And I think those things that we've got to keep in our mind.
Is that taken in?
Yeah, it should be at, at your desk, I think, because it just came in, but.
I was looking at, got an email.
Is this an email? This is email.
If, if I can, Mr. Mayor, one, one thing that's, that's important, and I agree with you and, and Secretary on the, the actual cost because it's, it's too high to be tenable. But, but I think it's important to note that, that out of that, 198 million of it is actual construction, the rest of it is rail cars and things like that, so.
Absolutely.
So when, when people say it's a $330 million construction project.
That's not correct.
It's really not. But I agree with you, with, with the contingency factors and things like that in there, it's not a, it's not a good one. My understanding is, is that, that the, the state and HRT are working to get an independent analysis of these numbers.
Well, I think this is what, David, this is what that letter's saying, so you knew more about it than I do. I just got it. But I, I concluded by saying that, what was our original estimate on the cars, Dave?
Five, one.
And we're getting a four?
Four.
Give me the percentage. Anyway, a substantial savings right there. And that's what I anticipate to continue because we're going to do this the right way and I know that everyone at this table wants to make sure the cost of a light rail system, which, a light rail system which we want, to include the bike path and the walkway, to include the bus services, you know, is going to come in at a price that is fair to the taxpayer. I thank you all for getting brief on this. I know it was a lot of information, knocked me down at first, but I concluded at the end, after I've been knocked down, it's good information, it's good stuff. So I'm, I'm happy with the presentation. Thank you all very much, we'll move on. Okay, City Council Liaison Reports.
Just did the HRT one.
Yes, ma'am, Amelia?
I just have one small one. I went over to Department of Human Services and listened to the presentation where they have a new contracted company for their files to have it done electronically and e-scaned for the start of that process, which I thought was very good.
Very good.
As the volume of papers they had, they are addressing it. So I sat through their presentation.
Very good. Yeah?
Ma'am, the Beaches and Waterways Commission, I believe, only meets when there is an issue that's at hand. I believe there is an issue that's at hand and that's commercial men hating fishing in the Chesapeake Bay. I've been contacted by dozens of local fishermen who say that this is absolutely hurting the fishing industry in the Chesapeake Bay. I think we need to convene the Beaches and Waterways Commission to look at this.
Who serves on that?
I'm the liaison to it.
Okay, all right. Y'all go for it.
You ready?
We're not going to get in your way. Other liaison reports, I have one, but I want to make sure, just to give you an update on HR TAC. We have started an exec, kind of like a city manager's update and I think I'm going to get that to be forwarded to you all every Friday as to what's going on at HR TAC. Things are starting to move at a pretty quick pace. And, you know, how, it's really neat, you learn something new every day. If you look at the three major water crossings, you know, which could be the Montreux-Merimac, excuse me, Patriots Crossing, HRBT, or the High Rise Bridge, all of a sudden you find that you had environmental studies for the tunnels that have expired and therefore mean that you have another two years to 30 months of studies to go on. The project that could begin as a result of having the, you know, the environmental studies completed, would sit, put the High Rise Bridge ready to go. All that being said, you know, the funding available for these projects without a toll would probably result in one project being built. And I believe, and again, I'm purely thinking out loud, telling you where I think this thing's heading. I think in the, between now, the end of the year, first part of the year, there will be a lot of discussion in our communities as to what to do, as, you know, getting input on tolls being placed on some of these projects in order to make them financially feasible. In other words, to build a true roadway system that would benefit all of Hampton Roads. So I have just say, please stay tuned, we're going to try to get that information out. I want it shared with the council members on a regular basis. But it's, it's a lot of stuff going on there. We are moving forward with the widening of 64. That's already been funded and we really and truly hope to have 64 widen all the way to Richmond. Of course, that isn't our full responsibility because we do get into the Richmond TPO for some of that. In addition, we have the 264-64 interchange, which is truly the only one that's really in Virginia Beach and that's going to be moving forward as well. So a lot of things going on and I certainly want you and the public to know what's going on and I'll keep you posted. We'll now get a City Council comment.
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
I was watching C-SPAN the other evening and the Commonwealth attorney from Chesapeake was addressing, Randy Forbes wasn't chairing the committee, but he was on it, it was about crime and drugs, particularly, she was talking a lot about the heroin trafficking and, and heroin-based crime in the city of Chesapeake. It was quite, I was quite alarmed by what she was talking about in the testimony. I shared it with Jim earlier last week, but I'd like to get some kind of report since this has got some national recognition.
We brought that up at the retreat and Barbara brought up the issue pertaining to hearing about shootings and so forth. I brought up the heroin issue and we're going to ask the police chief to come over.
Good, but that's an excellent thing, if you watched her testimony before the Congress, it was quite interesting. The, another thing I, in your packet, because I, I was on vacation, the retreat, I gave, sent you all, provided you all a copy of a proposed legislative item with regards to making it less discretionary for the police chief to withhold information on suicides from the family members. And I have a, I have a legislator who's going to sponsor that for me, but I will be in the packet. But if you have any thoughts, please do share with me, I'm happy to take your comments and concerns and incorporate those.
Other comments?
I was like.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to catch you off either.
That's right, very good. The, recently you probably saw the paper, this gets back somewhat to our discussion about SGAs. Whenever I see big real estate sales in the newspaper, I always go to Jerry Bannigan and ask him, what was the tax assessment on those properties, just to see what the differences are? And you may recall the one recently where the bagel store and the Barnes &amp; Noble is. Well, the Sunnybrook, that's the Lenskrafter and Bagel Shop, that property went for, that was assessed at $1.7 million, it sold for about $2.6. And its assessment over a five-year period only went up $60,000. It was, didn't go very well. Now, the other property, which is the larger one, you know, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, the Five-E's and the, that was assessed at $11,274,000. That's the parcel that sold for $21 million, you may recall. The paper mentioned debt consideration 8.8, they took that over, but the actual deed of trust data was 21.3 million bucks. But interestingly, during that six-year period, the land value never changed. Unchanged over that timeframe was 2011 to 2016, that's the book year. The land value remained the same at 3.9, but the building about doubled in value during that timeframe. But I think these are interesting things to look at because clearly these assessments are on income-based. Clearly the buy is based on what they think the future value is. But I think it also tells you that the people, if they can afford this, they can afford to build their own parking garages. That's what it tells me because they thought we have the cash flow to do it. But I think it's an interesting thing to watch those sales because, for example, just the reverse, the property that's across from Pembroke Meadows that Lowe's had bought originally, sold for less than half of what they purchased it for and substantially less than the tax assessment. So there's really a hodgepodge of things going on. But it is worthwhile to look and follow up on some of these things just to see the pattern of what's taking place as we start thinking about, as people come forward asking us for subsidies or freebies, just, you know, what's the real requirement?
John, to your point about the property that Barnes &amp; Noble sold, being assessed at $11 million and selling for $21 million, you just voted against the sale of the Captain Georges for primarily that reason because it wasn't at the assessment. So doesn't that show you that?
I'm talking about, when we're using the taxpayers' money, I have a different standard when the private can pay all they want. I'm a.
That's the market rate, I mean.
Then we don't have to pay the market rate, we can walk away.
Okay.
All right. Amelia?
Over the weekend, a couple of success. I attended the back-to-school events at Western Bayside.
I missed that.
And the police were there and I asked Reverend Daniels how many have he served. At about four o'clock, he had already served 2,800.
That's great.
And you will be pleased to know that the television, WGNT showed up just as we were talking and so various, so he did scoot around and take some pictures. Another thing, I went to the beach event sponsored and I was really pleased that Bobby Malati and beach event and his assistant, Velma Smith, they've been doing this for 19 years, but they had a huge crowd from 22nd all the way to 25th for the State Farm Funk Fest beach party. Very orderly and they actually called me up there, I had never been before, so many people. It's like getting suddenly starstruck. But it was very good, so I want to congratulate them on that event and also Bruce Williams and Gerald Daniels who co-produced the Virginia Beach Africana. They've been doing that for three years. So it's good to see that collaboration and partnership for the arts. They had a huge screen TV, people were watching even from the windows. So, you know, I told them, welcome to the best resort in all of coastal Virginia. How sad.
Love coastal Virginia.
That's it.
All right, other comments? All right, I got a, a vision here. Don't let me down, folks. And it's Barbara Henley's birthday, so we need to move this thing along, right Barbara?
She's buying the first round.
Happy birthday to you ahead of time.
I understand Barbara's buying down at town center.
We're all meeting at the Yard House right after.
Okay.
All right.
They sure invite the press.
Under ordinances and resolutions, anybody got any comments about any of them? Pretty quick.
That's a record-breaker, sir. All right. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A, code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Cybersecurity matters, discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities and briefings by staff members, legal counsel or law enforcement, or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or related threat to public safety where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system, or software program, i.e. IT cybersecurity. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, HRT Norfolk Southern Right-of-Way Acquisition Agreement. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration of or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, employment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, dislening or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Counsel appointments, councils, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do you have a motion?
Come on.
Do you have a second? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Danbury?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Vennett?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Earn?
Aye.
All right, we're going to start at five after five promptly, okay?